The next speaker, I have a thought. To give us. And I would like to do two of them.
Người biết biết bác biểu có cái email là vặt x hay là h52 tại gmail. Bốn số cuối của điện thoại là 3202. Bốn số cuối là 3202.
The next speaker is Train Brown or Brian Thomas?
Người biết biết bác biểu là đi làm sao.
I just wanted to invite you that you make sure that your town when it's translated translated 10 minutes then have to go down so make sure that you you start for that.
Tôi muốn nói là thời giờ của bạn.
Và hôm nay cho tụi bọn này, quý vị có thể đưa ra rất nhiều những ý kiến đỗ cấc của người dân Weston để có thể thành lập hoặc để có thể đưa một cái tổ Weston truyền đạt và có thể.
I hope that after today 19 you would learn from the comments of the residents here so that you could base on that and build a more prosperous and better city.
Tôi đã chỉ mang tôi của mục tiêu của chính nhân phải. Với lại có một công vụ và công vụ ban.
I mean three rounds. And I'm both hiring for or under President Bush and then President Obama.
Lý do tôi nói đây là tôi đã đây với tôi đã và quý vị chúng ta làm việc.
So the reason I brought up my military background was because I served under the US flag as well as what you are right now serving under the American flag.
Còn lại tôi lại có một cái đỗ cấc là cho Nam Quy là có hiệu.
Hi, I'm here tonight. I have some comments that I like to make work Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen out of City Vice Mayor.
An đã và đang là một cái tên diết tức với một người tên là Nguyễn Thị Dũng và người tên là Ngô Kỷ. Hai người đó đã mạ lý nói xấu những người này và trên kênh diết tức của họ và anh Nam Quy cũng đang.
You and you are the young gentleman who has email run a YouTube channel and on your channel while you were there you allow them to slander and offend women.
Những cái những cái lời nói vô cùng và hấp dẫn, chứng tỏ là.
I don't think that you can address the council but not to talk to the people.
Order these group and for pain in the.
We we voted for you. You listen to the.
Please, it's a time you have. Ladies, I would like to ask for quiet so that people can address the council please, please.
Tôi đã say on the turn by mail like this one from the team to sound it all and way mother.
I I propose that the mayor allow the interpreter to complete this interpretation before you make your comment or or interrupting that you understand me.
Và những cái lịch sử của ông ta thì quý vị cũng đã biết, tụi tôi chúng tôi đã gửi thư cho tất cả những nghị viên ở đây về lý lực của ông Nam Quang. Và hy vọng là ông luật sư sẽ nghĩ trả lời những những cái cái đó với tiếng Đức thì tôi hy vọng là nghĩ về cái coi hợp sơ của ông ta.
And you have already know the background. I said all deal as well as the city attorney or statement regarding background.
An Nam Quang là người anh cho.
Which the Nam Quan Nguyen represent the city of Westonshire and also the region.
Tôi nghĩ ông ờ thị trưởng nên phải xấu hổ vì không.
I think Mr. Mayor, we feel like he needs to have such a member, a council member and a new member like that represent the city and the community when he acts like that.
Tại vì một thằng đấy cũng là mà làm ờ những cái xấu thì người thì mới phải có cái.
When a member did something that's not proper than his leader or the one command should bear responsibility for being accountable.
Còn nữa, an Nam Quang đã để trên cái status Facebook của anh ta là Nguyễn Công Khỉ. Đâu có đâu có phải là ở thành phố không nghĩa là Cư Mỹ, Cư Mỹ là.
And this Nam Quan Nguyen has on his Facebook status, talking about monkey fighting monkeys, fighting for freedom of the city of Westonshire. I think he was referring to the president who are making comment here.
Còn nữa, khi mà anh ta ở quốc hội, anh ấy đi tới thì anh đấy trên Facebook nói là đi tới gặp tôi gặp cháu.
So he also also on his Facebook that when he was at the Asian Garden Mall on the occasion of the pet, he he was unlucky in that he ran into and was bitten by a dog.
Chắc chắn có thì chúng tôi đã có cái video về trên Youtube kể cho một. Facebook và đi kể một người dân tên là an an Mai. Thì không hiểu, không hiểu là có thể là anh ấy thì anh Mai là con cháu.
And so we look on his YouTube, the only occasion we saw that he was at the Asian Garden Mall was when he had a run chase with a resident named Mai. And so if he was talking about that, then he would be referring to our resident Mai and had a dog.
Tôi hiểu các nghị viên tôi cho 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 thị trưởng đi tới nhưng mà anh ấy là nhìn thấy Nam Quang là làm được cái.
These are my comments and input of the mayor, but if you think of these that are Nam Quan Nguyen are act properly and I don't have anything else to say there.
Cảm ơn, cảm ơn.
And city attorney, before you proceed for the next speaker, I would like to remind each and every other speaker that you can address the council and if you address the council with the evidence, the backup, I have no problem with that. At least don't mention any other people in their background and in their talk about it because we they are not here to defend themselves and we need to be fair about it. I did not interrupt you. I I interrupt because I want to make sure that everybody quiet so that they get.
I have a question for the attorney. Attorney, can you weigh in on this? Are we now police First Amendment rights for the folks what they can? They cannot say we're elected officials, we need to be able to take good and bad places unless we stand up for.
Since when do they, the speakers of the public have to come up with evidence? You certainly have don't, when you talk about people, you don't come up with evidence and in you know this public forum, we have never done that. So let's not start something that is wrong. Listen to me and if the city, if the city attorney tell me that they can do that, I will make sure we will look, we look into this and there's there's gonna see, you're gonna see some consequences because I can tell you, that is wrong. So can you, can you tell us? This is the second time I let it go the first time. But today I hear again that we have this new, is it rule?
No, let me, let me comment. Public criticism is expressly allowed of public officials. So we do not want to in any way interfere with that. People who have the right to come and express their concerns and that expressly includes criticism of the of the council and anything related to their fitness, to their duty, service council members. So those comments are allowed. We do not want to interfere with those. What I think the public needs to understand also those.
Tại vì anh Chí tả là anh quá ngu dốt, thật ra anh mới đưa ra một cái lời nói gì đó về, rất tiếc là bây giờ, cảm ơn nghị viên tập trung lễ hội đã can thiệp. Còn không thì mình cũng lên, mình giải thích cho anh Hương biết.
The city attorney, before you speak about to the public, okay, and before you correct the public, I want to make sure we correct the mayor. Because when the mayor says that he may have to bring evidence or they want to speak against anything that they want to talk about, okay, that to me is wrong. You want to confirm that?
There is no requirement to bring evidence.
I can tell you, I'm sorry?
No requirement, they said there's no requirement.
Alright, I want to make sure we stop saying that because I can tell you that I will look to remove you. As city attorney, okay, I'm listening. If you keep letting him say that. Excuse me, he just said he's not correct. No, he said that the public don't need to bring evidence. Did you know I just asked him and he replied, that's good. He's he's taking a fire and then the trial just he just report because he. Excuse me, I'm not telling you, I'm having a seat manager. He wants fire a staff. Okay, I want to make sure obviously. I want to make sure that we confirm today that no longer are we going to say as a mayor, public has to bring evidence. I want to confirm that.
And I said very clearly, they do not have to bring evidence.
Alright, the public, you heard that? You don't have to bring others.
The interruption goes both ways. Me as council members have to be respectful of the public. There's many times the public has their perception and sometimes it's correct, sometimes it's not, but we here have to respect the First Amendment rights. This is America. We have to, we have to make sure that we respect Trump's, not interrupting and everything too is up here. We don't need to go back and forth between council members bickering over each other. We we're setting a bad example of these councils. Like I said before, and I'm gonna say it again until you prove me wrong.
It's correct because she should not be thought.
Council member, wait. I'm the council member, Wes. Let me respond to this. Council member Manzo, I remember vividly that you told me last meeting that I do stand, you know, if there is a person I I need to jump in, did you say that? I've been exactly what it is today. So please stop, stop. There is no more of this, please.
Transmitter, translator, mayor, excuse me. We need to, we need to stop it. What is this discussion that's happening here? We need to get out of public. We need to get back to me. I'm following whose call it is, but I don't have to privilege something. But I cannot have a say something. I have the right to say something, please. I don't have that. We put what the translator translated, what this. What is granted, yes, what is translated, translated here on public, no, no personal attack there.
Don't forget. I already gave you a copy for everybody here, the lawsuit from Navon. So long time he say he didn't receive it. I email one and our channel. Ladies and gentlemen, happy new year, everyone.
Tôi biết đây là người một một tài đơn nghị vốn hàng bố và như thể tuổi con nhà, kính hiền cho con bà ông này cái thứ này này, yêu cầu hai nghị viên. Chẳng tin hết vào người Nam Quang, hãy tự chấp tao là làm chuyện.
I understand home when I am a resident of the city of Westonshire, our home in the country. I'm writing with the.
Chắc đây là nghị viên tôi không còn phải để nghị ý sao không, những người đại gian bác biểu cư dân ở Nam Quy.
Before going into the detail, I have to tell you first keep the writing comment in private for first.
Vì tôi thông tin anh đại gian hội nghị nếu cần đại gian phụ trợ để giải quyết những việc quan trọng, quý vị hãy nhìn có hộ căn con nhà, bảo hiểm vàng, học cục cần phải làm việc thêm nhiều thêm học. Cho những vấn đề quan trọng cấp sách cần phải giải quyết, quý vị chỉ có làm việc 26 buổi, không qua tháng là 30 năm, 300 ngày, mỗi ngày quay và đôi khi còn bị phổi bỏ. Nếu quý vị tham chuyển thời gian học quá lâu, ăn đờ sớm hơn là không thực tế, bởi vì đang hút cư dân phải đi làm về nhà tối, ăn tối nên học sớm hơn năm, giờ chiều là không thực tế. Mỗi tháng chỉ có hai lần mà quý vị không thể kéo dài về học thì cần thiết, tôi đề nghị quý vị nên tự tiết, nếu cần hãy thông báo là tên là để cần tiết mà.
I can let you know something to the council meeting. If you need extra work or extra time to do more of the things. If you look at the California or US Congress or Senate, they also need long sessions for important issues. The only work is 26 sessions, no more than four, five hours, seven days, three, two by day here, every two weeks or so. And sometimes it can cancel too. So if you complain about the meeting time that's too long, well, it's impractical for people. If you change the starting time or meeting time to an earlier time, most residents of our city have to go to work, come home, have dinner. So meeting time, starting on meeting time 5pm is inappropriate. There are only two times a month. And so if you, if you don't think it works, a long session, then I propose that you resign to the county.
Sức mạnh nghị viên không được bảo đảm ai, các cụ cư dân đã bác biểu. Công việc của quý vị là lắng nghe đề xuất của tụi, khi dùng nghị viên Nam Quan Nguyễn dân chưa có đảm bảo, mình làm cụ, khi mình cư dân đi tiết.
Sir, council member should not leave the chamber when our residents, your job is to listen out and then now by the way, what they have. That for 15 minutes or last minute when you criticize.
Thứ tư, nghị viên nên có thái độ và tư thế vững chắc khi cư dân bác biểu, không nên quay ghế. Hay đâm gương có vẻ à hơn và không quan tâm khi bất cứ ai bác biểu như thị trưởng, trại linh hay tài đình.
Sir, council member should have a proper attitude and posture, posture when residents speak. You should not be between a rocket in your chair, don't get indifferent or dissimilar when when people say like we are trying to win the class.
Thị trưởng Trại Linh Nguyễn nên học theo cách sự thật chuyên nghiệp như người tiền nghiệp là thị trưởng thi thật. Hay vì tôi con với những người bác biểu và có mũ không.
The mayor, Chinese, we should learn to be professional when your predecessor, we have feed that instead of having with a speaker and unnecessarily hammering the word.
Là hai nghị viên Nguyễn, tên là Trại Linh Nguyễn và Nam Quan Nguyễn, nên đi học, lấp lại cách điều hành và quản lý, nhất là cần trau đổi thêm. Cái hành văn vì chính người Việt Nam thì I can't talk now, I will tell you, the point of view speak broken English.
Both council member when and when should take an important issue path on how to run and react. You know that how to run the city and how to react when people come in. And I also need to prove your students file because the young, young boy out of community have criticized that both when think with broken English.
Now the lawyer. Luật sư thành phố không nghe ngắt là cư dân khi bác biểu. Chứ vụ luật sư là ông vẫn thành phố tránh những vi phạm pháp luật. Nếu cần chỉ nên gọt ý sau khi cư dân bác biểu. Rằng ý ông được các nghị viên muốn nên không cần phải bảo vệ họ, nhưng ông không có quyền bố vẫn anh em trẻ của chúng tôi. Nếu cần có thể đưa chúng tôi ra tòa, nếu có việc ra tòa, trong chương trình lý thuyết của thành phố có hướng dẫn cho mọi người làm lại khi bác biểu.
And I want to be clear, and this is not the world president when it's your, your job is to fight the city council all the way or fighting for law. You are employed by the city council and you need to protect them, but you have no other power besides to fight. So you should not stop us. And if you think that we did something wrong and take us to court or to see a jail, already set out a guideline for people to address the council problem.
Về thị trưởng Trại Linh Nguyễn, ông là người nói ao, là trước ông chẳng lại cư dân lâm hại, ông không nhận được bản án của tòa về có thị trưởng Nam Quan Nguyễn. Ngày hôm nay tôi đã làm copy cho em mỗi người có tất cả môn, ngày hôm nhận được hai lần email và email đã bảo là tôi biết rằng ông đã nhận được một email ngày 14 tháng 12 năm 2022. Và một trong mấy địa quán là tôi biết ông cũng nhận được, tại sao ông lại nói là ông không nhận được? Ông là một người công giáo, yêu ác đối với những ông vi phạm điều hành trước lắm. Ngày ngày 2 tháng 12 năm 2023, tôi đã gửi ra cho bên, ông nhận được email chưa? Đừng nói láo là ông chưa nhận được. Chứ khi ông không biết tiếng Anh, you speak open your mind, open your eye, mayor, listen to me. Về chuyện ông bảo, ông bảo ai muốn biết thắng cấp của ông thì lên trường là Long Beach và đi cảnh sát đường ông hạ cậu vi phạm như không? Police ở ngoài Nam, bằng bánh xe của ông, ông bảo đi đây, đi ở đây.
I show you here, this is my job. You say you work and not work.
As the mayor, Chinese, you are a liar when you answer our president, the head of our cancer last time. You said that you did not receive the court judgment regarding man by there, that might win. I sent all members of the council. I sent that email on December 14 and it was from everyone on the council. So why are you lying? You are a capital, but you wrote, you ate. I sent that again on January 12, 2023. Did you receive it? Some lie, some say that you did not receive it unless you cannot read English. And I assume you are free at Long Beach State. You hope people want to find out whether you have agreed or not in Long Beach State, if you go there. Well, when use stuff you want traffic violation, I'm gonna tell them, I'm asking the driver, I'm gonna tell them, go over to the MP and see if you have a driver license.
This is not fraud, okay? I work in not fraud, don't be lie me. This is, he will attract. This is not fraud, recommendation. This here, here the bill. You say you don't have, how do I have? Show me. I am police, I argue you. Gravitation, you go, you go, you are weak, you are, you talk to me. I have more to work, you know, my time, you want, I wanna talk to. You go back the right time. I talk about you. Did you write a message? Say look, look, no, look, no. You, you wanna read it?
Francis, the next speaker is Tom Mann.
Chứ mà so lại đi đảo, làm sao không phải.
First of all, my sincere reading to the city council of the city of Westonshire.
Okay, tôi xin chào ông Cha Carlos và và. À hôm nay chán là nói tiếng, tôi như cho cho được sự công hoạt động nhân.
Second, I would like to thank our council member, Colin Mando and Steve Levo for for bringing justice and fairness to the voice of our residents.
Tôi cũng nói là tôi cho ông luật sư.
I would like our present council.
Ông Hùng Nguyễn đã nói rồi, tôi hôm nay tôi và vẫn nói tiếp là ông nên tôi như là đừng bao giờ giớ dụ bản hồn của chúng tôi.
Even though Mr. Hong Nguyen has already said it, I'm gonna say it again, I want to ask that you, the attorney, do not come in and interrupt our.
Tại giờ đây tôi xin thưa, ông thị trưởng Nam Quan Nguyễn.
So now on to Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen.
Đây là bác đấy, to hình sự quốc hội thượng phẩm Santana về việc ông bị cắt ly vợ con. Với tội trạng mai xuống không giấy phép, đột nhập gia cư quốc hợp pháp và bảo hành vợ cùng hai nước, con và ông. Thị trưởng xa ly chí quyển nói là đã không nhận được, nhưng hôm nay tôi hoàn toàn phản đối.
So this is the judgment from the attorney, uh, of the Santa Ana Spirit, for, uh, regarding, uh, restraining order against you, with respect to your wife and children, for carrying a, possessing a firearm, uh, without a license, and also for just passing, uh, and violence for your wife and your two children. And, and, and these are not even, uh, the judgment that the mayor, Chao Chi Minh, claimed that he did not concede, uh, on his own, uh, as a court.
Các ông thị trưởng xa ly quyển, quyển Nam Quan, già ông Nick Khô, Công Lê, tức nhiên là Lê Công Tâm, đã du cáo án vừa việc và nhà báo đầu nhục chủ trương suy tạ thành phố Westminster. Vì danh dự của thành phố như tự cách, tự dân, tôi yêu cầu quý vị hãy tuy tố báo vừa việc về với có trung thực suy tạ thành phố Westminster, ơn tiêu của chúng tôi, xem video clip, tức dụng lưu, dụng tốc, đáp thân. Ông Nam Quan Nguyễn.
There, Chao Chi Minh, and because of Nam Quan Nguyen, and Mr. Nick Watong, or Lê Công Tâm slandered during their news, and, uh, their journalists, even though, for storing the cities of Westminster. Well, for the honor of this city and as a resident, I ask that you bring a lawsuit, or a lawsuit to the community board, for what you claim to be, uh, slander, slandering, uh, my lovely city of Westminster, and please watch, uh, this YouTube, uh, video, if you got, um, watch.
Ông Nam Quan Nguyễn là một YouTuber, và đã lợi dụng, đã dùng chất năng này để xâm phạm đời tương và tấn công cư dân. Ngoài tôn trọng ngày 20 tháng 1, 2023, ông đã cùng với Nguyễn Tuyết Đụng xách nhiễu cư dân bằng video quay sao lưng hai vợ chồng của ông Mai Trương từ trong phút và khỏ ra đến ngoài đường Busa.
Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen, uh, you are a YouTuber, and you use that platform, uh, for putting data privacy and attack, uh, a resident in public. On January 20, 2023, uh, you and Yu Tian Nguyen harassed our city resident. You filmed them from their back and harassed them, this couple, Mike, Cruz, and his wife. You followed them to a lost car, from the Asian Garden Mall, to Busa, and we have that, and we filmed them from there.
Cùng với những lời ngôn ngữ tôn tiểu cũng chưa nhu phóng họ trước mặt, nhiều người đang đi chơi một trận hoa tước. Tại đây, ông có biết ông đã làm dụng chất vũ khí thị trưởng, qua công việc YouTuber không phải hành nghề báo chí mà là một sự vi phạm, một sự vi phạm đời sống riêng đơn thuần cư dân. Đây là một sự gia chẳng, nguyên lợi, vì ông đã làm dụng, hay lẫn lộn giữa hai cái mũ, ông ra câu YouTuber hay là phó thị trưởng thành phố Westminster.
We use a same language, or, in front of a crowd, uh, there were a lot of people at the pet flower market there. You abuse your position for, as Vice Mayor, uh, are you a Vice Mayor, are you a YouTuber? You are not acting as a journalist, uh, when you violate the privacy of our residents. And I see, I think that's a conflict of interest here, because you are wearing two different hats. Are you a YouTuber, or are you a Westminster City Council member?
Một phó thị trưởng không thể cải nhau, hãy theo theo thành viên và một văn đã đi nhục và người khác, ngoài tôn trọng. Như vậy, tôi hỏi hội đồng thành phố nhà luật sư cũng như tổng khoa kỹ, cái người phạm Nam Quan Nguyễn này có xứng đáng là phó thị trưởng của quý vị hay không? Tôi đề nghị hãy từ cựt tên Nguyễn Nam Quan này.
As, as, as a Vice Mayor, you should not be holding profanity and bring, uh, games member with you, uh, and assault people. So I have a question for the, uh, city council here. Is Nam Quan Nguyen worthy, worth it, or deserving to be a, uh, city council member? I, I, I should ask that he should be.
Một người nữa, thưa quý, một người giống như Nam Quan Nguyễn không xứng đáng là một người nghị viên, tôi được nói khi mà phó thị trưởng. Tôi không biết cái bà em như Phan Resth gì đó, không biết bà có học được thuật khoái quang như để mà vào làm nghị viên hay không? Mới dù tuyên thể như này, người phục đã nhớ thể có tên Nam Quan Nguyễn này vào là phó thị trưởng.
Uh, I don't believe Nam Quan Nguyen deserved to be, uh, our Vice Mayor. I don't know if the councilmember Amy Phan West, uh, have gone through the orientation on council act and how to become a, or a, a city council member, because this candidate has to be a city council member. She, uh, vote or recommend that Nam Quan Nguyen be our, uh, Vice Mayor.
Lần cuối, một người nữa, tôi đề nghị ông Nam Quan Nguyễn hãy từ cựt đi, đừng để cho người dân bị phóng hổ tiếp tục. Cuối tuần, tôi xin thúc quý hội đồng, cũng như quý vị có học kề hôm nay, được nhiều sức khỏe, an khang, thịnh vượng, xin chào.
Thank you. I would like to ask that Nam Quan Nguyen resign from the council, uh, and, or as the, and as the city council. I would like to wish all of you, uh, a new year with good health and prosperity. Thank you.
The next speaker is my phone. Follow by Ross Anderson.
Uh, thank you, chào các mọi người.
First of all, to inviting everyone.
Hôm nay tôi muốn提問.
I'm a, a grass city council meeting.
Bởi vì tôi thực tâm là anh em của tôi, tôi là.
Because I want to ensure that Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen understands what I'm saying, uh, and understand everything I say.
What's an English? Ờ bởi vì tôi, tôi rất nghiền người nói là, tôi thực anh em của tôi không hiểu.
Because I have heard from many people, uh, saying that Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen is not understanding what I was saying last time.
Hôm nay quý vị có thể thấy, thế là tại sao tôi gọi lại đúng không?
So he might be surprised or wondering why I'm dressing so nicely today.
Một người tôi biết ta là anh em.
A person who understands me the most would be Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen.
Tôi nghĩ thế là ông ta tôi, thế là anh em ta tôi, thế là điều gì?
I, I don't think this is a joke, I think this is an insult.
Lần trước tôi lên đây, Nam Quan đã lên mạng và xưng lên là phó thị trưởng thành phố Westminster.
The last time I was here, uh, Nam Quan went on, uh, the internet and introduced himself as the Vice Mayor of City of Westminster.
Và tôi dồn chúng tôi là cái anh bọn đầu hết, tôi Nam Quan.
And he laughed at us, he said, uh, he should dress to wear a suit like, like himself.
Ờ, tôi không biết được.
I respected that. About why I'm wearing a suit today.
Bởi vì hôm nay tôi thực tâm là anh em của tôi không hiểu.
And so I think from this time on, uh, from this day on, uh, Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen will not have a problem understanding what I'm saying.
Tôi lên đây, có một bài, thứ gì nó là trọng minh, là tôi giống như mọi người ở đây, yêu cầu anh em thử thức thèm xong được không?
I am here for, I have a feeling to share, but the first thing I'd like to say, uh, like many here, I want Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen to resign as soon as possible.
Thứ hai, tôi lên đây, tôi cho thành phố biết, và thông báo thành, thông báo thành phố biết, là Nam Quan đang tấn công và để tôi nhớ điều là phó thị trưởng thành phố Westminster.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm here tonight, because I want to give, but I want as a CEO, and I want also want to give the CEO notice, that Nam Quan Nguyen has a Vice Mayor, has a City Vice Mayor, is attacking and defending me.
Tôi là tôi nghe.
I am a business person.
Tôi thèm chuơ, người là other của Nam Quan.
Uh, I am suing, uh, Nam Quan Nguyen's media partner.
Và cái hệ đen ở, ở appeal, quên mất appeal.
And that case is on appeal, uh, is, is being appealed by their side.
Tôi lên đây với cái cá gì nhầm, bạn chúng tôi, tôi không ú, là một cái gay bắp của thành phố Westminster.
But I am here, or I want to contribute, uh, possibly, I, I do not want to cause problems, uh, trouble for the city of Westminster.
Là thành phố phải ga biện pháp, hay là cái gì đó để ngăn chặn Nam Quan tiếp tục mò lị, vì bản thân tôi với nhân viên là phó thị trưởng.
I want to see if you have some measure to prevent Nam Quan Nguyen from attacking and defending my family, uh, as, as the Vice Mayor of the city.
Những gì đã xảy ra, tôi có thể tha thứ, nếu bắt ngày từ hôm nay mà Nam Quan còn tiếp tục mò lị, chúng tôi, chúng tôi phải, phải để tên thành phố Westminster với là người bị cao.
I can forgive, let go of what had happened, but from tonight on, if Nam Quan Nguyen continue to attack and defend us, uh, in this position as the Vice Mayor, then.
Ờ, tôi, tôi nghĩ tôi.
That I would name the city of Westminster as a defendant in my lawsuit.
You think that?
Uh, that's something that I do not want anymore.
Somebody could sue you by law too.
So I have some evidence, I have some evidence I would like to present you.
Mới ngày hôm qua.
Just as recent as last night.
Nam Quan, tuy mỗi cô là phó thị trưởng thành phố Westminster.
Nam Quan, uh, and now that he's the Vice Mayor of City of Westminster.
Trên, trên đầu công viên mà bạn quảng cáo, bán thuốc đi bóc.
On this general talking, uh, hair coloring, uh.
Và dùng tên của tôi, ta đi đến mò lị, là tôi.
And he then, uh, called out my name, uh, to defend me and to make fun of me and my name.
Này nhất, anh em của anh, Nam Quan, tôi cũng là người làm.
Uh, most seriously, or Nam Quan, uh, said that I am a person with mental problem.
Lúc đó, ngày 20.
Uh, before that, on the twentieth.
Tôi đã gặp Nam Quan, outside, first off.
I ran into Nam Quan at the Asian Garden Mall.
Nam Quan đã, nhờ đó, không đâu.
Nam Quan, uh, was acting, uh, as a threat. He put, like, he put the microphone there, he put this phone up so near my face like this.
Quý vị, giờ thấy là chút to, lại vẫn thăng cấp ra ngoài.
Uh, you knew that I was here two weeks ago, uh, with a positive attitude.
Strong, strong, loud voice.
Uh, and I speak, I spoke in a high voice.
No, this is a bar, can you hear me? You have so you still laugh like this, please, but with the heat, he laugh. You run the show, can you talk to me, he laugh, he like that, he she laugh, he so heavy, he didn't know he's bad.
I saw.
I can't believe you laugh like this, this year, hey, this year. Wait a minute, what, they're attacking us, they're trying to.
When he attacked me at the Asian Garden Mall.
Tôi hỏi anh là, YouTube của, hay là phó thị trưởng?
I asked him if he were a YouTuber or Vice Mayor.
Tôi cho là tôi, tôi là, uh, this answer for oral communication, oral communication. Thì thì nghe, he just whispered. Nhưng điều, à hèn hạ, sai, hèn hạ, sorry.
I didn't know.
Nhưng điều hèn hạ, lỗi, cái điều cho vẫn là, Nam Quan không trả lời hèn hạ.
The nastiest or most cowardest thing that he did was that he did not respond at all.
Thì về trên đầu YouTube của him.
He then went back, went on, this YouTube channel.
Tóm lại, tôi, tôi.
Uh, together with the defendant, uh, in my lawsuit, I made.
We back to home, right?
And, uh, so two of them defended, uh.
Tôi lên đây, tôi là, tôi, tôi.
And when he did that, did it as the Vice Mayor of City of Westminster.
Lần trước tôi lên, tôi là, tôi là.
So last time this year, I spoke in a loud voice, in a strong.
Nhưng hôm nay tôi không thằng.
But tonight, uh, I'm not like that.
Bởi vì sao tôi đọc, cái anh là của Nam Quan.
Because after I read the judgment, uh, against Nam Quan.
Thì điều, thì Nam Quan sử dụng súng bốc phá.
Uh, for example, he, uh, used a gun, or had a gun, uh, illegally.
Ngũ súng bốc phá.
He bought a gun illegally.
Thế thì, thế là.
Because he had evidence.
Và dùng súng để đàm vào của him.
And he used a gun to threaten his wife.
Thì điều chính là, Nam Quan tôi sử dụng súng, như vậy, vì đối với tôi.
So if Nam Quan can do that to his wife, treat his wife like that, then, uh, to me, or you can do, what, 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 you know, what you would do to me, nothing, nothing.
Tôi cho rằng, những người, trong, trong nhóm của Nam Quan, lúc sao, thế là có.
I believe that Nam Quan and his group, or people in his group, uh, who attacked him soon all day.
Là tôi bây giờ, tôi phải đi với các bạn tôi.
So now I have a bodyguard to accompany me.
Hôm nay là thành phố.
Uh, tonight.
Thank you, the next speaker is Ross Anderson.
We have a good attitude today.
I'm scared, man.
My brother is fine.
The rest of the city council staff, the Westminster PD, chúc mừng Nam Quan. The Quang Tri Monument Committee is made up of honorable and respected members who put their lives on the line to fight against communism and the people, people free, they're very respectful people. But the Quang Tri Monument Committee was wrong for the city of Westminster, and should be disbanded, and the project terminated. The original Vietnam War Memorial Agreement dated April 2, 2002, intentions prohibited adding any other sculptures to the park. I would like to add something to any motion that might be brought up today. There should be a permanent ban on monuments or structures being built in free park or any other building park plant. The Quang Tri Monument Committee, a special interest group that does not represent the entire Vietnamese community, and certainly not the majority of the citizens of Westminster, wants to place their historically inaccurate Quang Tri monument in St. Goldstein's Park or Westminster Park. The city of Westminster is recognized internationally for St. Goldstein's Park and the Vietnam War Memorial. It's a holy place, American Vietnam veterans come to pray with the South Vietnamese, to remember those who paid the ultimate price, and those that still suffer today. Why would you want to destroy the ambience with this historically inaccurate Quang Tri monument? Tại sao bạn muốn phá hủy môi trường với monument cổ điển lịch sử này? Bạn đã nghe từ bà của Quang Tri. Xin chào cờ vàng, không còn monument nữa. Có được đề nghị từ bạn rằng các doanh nghiệp không trả chi phí. Các doanh nghiệp không có nguồn vốn duy trì. Monument... ...ngay khi monument được xây dựng, các doanh nghiệp sẽ trở lại không có chi phí và thị xã sẽ có trách nhiệm hoàn toàn. Sân khấu của Westminster là giải pháp không chi phí duy trì. Đó là lý do. Một người nghĩ, với gần 400 signatures申请, bất kỳ nơi đặt monument nào, bao gồm tất cả những ý kiến tương đối public phản đối đặt monument tại Freedom Park, hoặc đề nghị sân khấu của Westminster, hội đồng nên tôn trọng phần lớn các thành viên của thành phố Westminster và không phải một nhóm đặc biệt nhưng tôn trọng. Có được đề nghị rằng các signatures không来自Westminster. Không tất cả những người Việt Nam Mỹ và các thành viên thực sự có signatures trên những cuộc xin mời này. Những người tham gia vào các sự kiện Freedom Park cần sống ở Westminster. Tôi personally know có một số từ LA, Arizona, Nevada, San Jose, San Diego. Công viên trưởng Greg Mandel of Oklahoma. Người Việt Nam đến từ khắp mọi nơi và đến Manchester cho monument của Việt Nam chiến tranh và thờ mẹ người Việt Nam. Giao nhiệm chọn địa điểm, hội đồng công ty, hội đồng công ty điều hành, họ đã nói không sân khấu hay sân khấu của Westminster. Nó được ủng hộ bởi những thành viên bất ngờ, 100/1 chống bất kỳ nơi đặt monument nào. Tôi resign từ hội đồng công ty. Và đây là những lý do mà hội đồng công ty nên nhìn vào. Tôi không muốn tên. Một nhóm... Có ba kế hoạch, dự án lịch sử cổ điển, không开放给大众公众, các điều hành vi trái lệ, không có bản chất đạo đức thực sự, đánh giá không công bằng cho người Việt Nam Mỹ và thành phần của Mỹ. Không có chiến thắng không có lợi ích của người Mỹ. Mở rộng, kết thúc. Họ sẽ tìm chỗ đặt monument. Giữ tất cả chi phí tương lai cho thị xã, trở thành tài khoản tài chính. Cảm ơn.
Người tham dự là ông Westminster Ostrak, theo dõi Amy.
Good evening, Karen Rangus, Westminster Washington. A huge shout out and congratulations to city manager Christine Gordon, ACN Adolfo Zadoff, community services director Vanessa Johnson, police chief Darren Lene, mayor Wayne, and everyone else who worked their butts off playing last Sunday's great parade. The parade was more organized and enjoyable than past parades organized by outside groups. You pulled off a freaking miracle despite everything. Christine and Adolfo, you are the best leadership team ever. You guys rock. Item 3.5, destroying and robbing staff of a perfectly good conference room just to accommodate Mayor Wayne's ego and his whopping four hours per week office hours costing taxpayers $11,000 is ludicrous. Meanwhile, offices in this chamber building sit vacant most of the time. The council meeting tight orders item 3.6 are not effective until the first regular meeting in March. Our two new council members are unwilling to put in the work required to hold their seats. Nam Quan, during your very first council meeting, you left the dais six times in less than three and a half hours and you missed seventeen minutes of the meeting. On the dais, back now, you are completely bored and unable to even pay attention. Step down and let somebody actually capable and willing do your job. It is infuriating that this new candidate refused councilman Dan's very reasonable substitute motion to reduce public comment but allow speakers to address the council on individual agenda items and receptions when they are heard, item 3.8. Instead, the game voted to slash our speaking time by forty percent. This, plus their vote to require two members to add agenda items, plus their vote to cut meetings down to four hours, clearly proves Westminster is now under the control of a authoritarian oligarchy. Just how does that align with fighting for and preserving personal freedom, Amy? Look up the dictionary, then look in the mirror, because you are the ultimate definition of hypocrite. Vice Mayor Wayne, you must refuse yourself to not participate in item 5.11 in the city where the resolution 5103 is denouncing fake news. 5103 came about because of the plethora of lies and disinformation propagated by you on your trash media network. On 4/700, your income sources are listed as YouTube and Facebook. You clearly have a financial conflict of interest here and extreme bias. You are not a true listener, Nam Quan. You're just a bad actor who spreads sensationalistic bullshit propaganda to our most vulnerable Vietnamese-speaking community. And now you are doing so under color of authority that is serious.
That is canon.
That's bad. True journalists followed a society of professional journalists code of ethics based on four key principles: seek truth and report it minimally harm, act independently and be accountable and transparent. You sure as hell don't do any of that. Item 6.1, I shudder just imagining airhead Danny, knucklehead Nam Quan, or crackpot Charlie representing our city on outside agency boards. They were literally incapable of reading or comprehending reports, formulating concise thoughts, speaking intelligently or staying offline. Item 7.2, Nam Quan and Charlie want to disband the cultural arts commission. They don't even understand or appreciate the positive effect that broadening community participation in any arts in our city. It is not far yet because the city clerk's office unfortunately has done a poor job with advertising and recruiting for commission vacancies including this one. Do not dictate to disband this commission, instead encourage bringing positivity to our city through the arts. Item 7.1, I opposed the QT monument becoming a city project when committed one and a half years ago and I still do. It has been a total waste of city resources trying to work with this obstinate group. I attended all committee meetings and even reached out to members privately to encourage compromise and historical accuracy. My efforts were rewarded last July with a publicly disclosable email from a committee member, Quan Nguyen, that read in all caps, quote, "How dare you send me an email? I don't believe it and I don't care. F you see cable." And it wasn't spelled out. End quote. Nice, huh? So, demand that this committee disband or disband this committee and terminate the project. This will either A, force them to pursue placement at the memorial park or other private property. Or B, it's going to result in another monument related to lawsuit filed against our city. It's amazing that our own elected and appointed officials seem held out on suing the very city they represent. Good God. And I'd like to request, Nam Quan and Amy in particular, why the smart ass, pardon my language, smirks off their face when the public is speaking? You show respect. Your job is to listen to us. Your job is not to interrupt us, not criticize us. You have to listen. And you lead the dais every time you... I don't know why you got ADHD, I don't know. But you need to stay here and do your job. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lee Wayne. Because my English sucks, so I need my friend away from me in English. I have two questions. Number one, for Mr. Pan West.
Tôi hỏi cho bà Amy. Bà vừa chân ướt chân đá vào thành phố chưa biết gì cả. Bà biết gì về đồng chí Nam Quan mà bà tổ chức để đề nghị cho đồng chí này lên chức phó địa trưởng? Dù bản thân của đồng chí này cũng không có được chức kinh nghiệm nào. Có phải vì bà chân cài đặt ma kia, ô san, cùng với những từ đó nên bà phải có thật hết được, vây cánh cho bà làm gì không? Bà không nên có đường đơn của thành phố như vậy. In English.
The first question is for Mrs. Amy Pan West. You just got elected into the city council. What do you know about Mr. Nam Quan? That you're ready to promote him to be a vice mayor? Or he himself doesn't have any experience as a council member? Is it true that because you are a member of Bolsa, not the gangster, therefore you need to establish the power and secure the control of your gang?
Tôi hỏi thứ hai cho đồng chí Nam Quan. Người Việt Nam tại này hầu hết là nạn nhân của cộng sản và đã liều chết kẻ chống cộng sản. So, ngày 2 năm 1 năm thành phố Westminster, đồng chí chiến thắng đã mở rộng vòng tay chào đón Việt Cộng sang sông chiến, khu phố ô san, hầu hết số tình án của chúng tôi. Đồng chí Nam Quan từng công khai ra ở tiểu tỉnh Đảng Cộng sản Việt Nam, chặt lố. Từng công khai và anh nhậu nước cá lụ Việt Cộng ngay tại thành phố này. Bây giờ đồng chí đình cát và đem chiến quyền của thành phố có phải lợi ích để biến cái thành phố này? Thành một thành phố sẽ do Việt Cộng kiểm soát hay không?
The second question is for Mr. Nam Quan. The majority of Vietnamese immigrants here are victims of the communist government and risking their lives to run away from the cruel evil and even communist rulers. After almost twenty years sitting in this city, Trichat opened arms to welcome communist Vietnam to invade Bolsa Boulevard, the main street in Los Alamos. Mr. Nam Quan has officially praised the chairman of Vietnamese Communist Party in one of his YouTube videos. Mr. Nam Quan also participated in a party with a group of communist government officials right to the city at Westminster. Now you got your way to be the vice mayor. Do you have intentions for the city and the council and control of communist leader?
And if this job is too hard for you, throw your new lead to step up.
Yes.
The next speaker is for Lee Lee Lee, followed by Tony Lee.
Mayor, can I just... This has nothing to do with the speaker.
Yes, sir.
For everyone, if you want the extra five minutes, you have to have a translator. So in this case, she only spoke for five minutes, so that was fine. But it should be, the way the law reads is if you utilize a translator, you get your time doubled. So I just want to make sure that's clear, that not speaking your own spoken language.
Good evening, everyone. Well, I was preparing to speak in Cantonese in light of what happened in Montreux Park in the happy day. But, well, we already have a minute of time to note all the victims of those people. But because of what happened, I have to go ahead and... So from the last meeting, I could randomly tell you, well, I will try to be respectful calling you. Well, that... Every gentleman told you to go back and learn something. Do your job. Do you know what the job is? One hit two, three. Run to be in this council. You know what you need for? You understand your duty, your responsibility. First of all, this is our communication, okay? You think this is a time for us to trust you to bathroom? You have to put up with it? At the very beginning, I heard a comment, Raider, a whole Raider. No more those, no more people that come up here to criticize you. You think you have to put up with this? Go back and learn of your duty, okay? Why, why did you run? Why did you want to be our council member? Why did you want to be a Raider? Why did you accept to be our vice mayor? You know why you're here? You know... I'm not talking, Charlie, I'm not talking. I'm speaking. I'm telling you, we, the people, the residents here, in our communication sessions, tell you what you think of your performance. How you want, how we want the city to be led. How we want the city to be in the future. And you are a public servant. Get that to your thick head, okay? You are a public servant. We, the people, the residents, are your boss. If you want to be a teacher, go and apply to be a teacher. Don't sit there with a grumble to tell people quiet, be quiet. Learn English, okay? You don't tell people to be quiet. That's very rude, that's a very... Know your English. If they talk out of turn, you tell them. You don't tell people to be quiet. You don't use your grumble like a monkey in a suit. That's ridiculous, embarrassing. And just like people tell you anything. Are you proud of yourself to nominate a deadbeat back? A guy who skipped payment to support his girlfriend? Five seven years old children? And he didn't even pay the money to support them? Are you proud of your sister, your daughters? Marry a guy who would pull out guns to threaten their life? Are you promoting evading tax for a guy who owe the state tax money? Are you promoting loom content for a guy to go on YouTube? To use for family? Nam Quan. Sorry, I don't have a translator, he certified. But he didn't translate it completely. I'm sorry for the language, but this is a fact I have to say. You didn't just say fuck you. You tell the people, not your enemies, not some criminal. They didn't do anything wrong, they just... They just happen to be on the other side, your opponent. They organize and defend, and you tell them, fuck their mothers, fuck your fathers, fuck all of you. That's what you said to an eighty years old, to fuck with. All people, and that's what you say in Vietnamese. Fuck your mother, fuck your father. Would you like me to say that to your face? And Amy, are you proud of you? Now we needed this guy to be our vice mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Charlie Min. My vice mayor, Nam Quan Huynh. City council member Charles Mandel. Council member Alan West. And council member Kim Ho. I am Tony Hui. I have been living in this city for twenty two years. And I keep coming up to this podium to express my concern to our city. Today, I do reveal my true color. This is the color of... Make America American again. My God. Not my, my, okay? Please remember this. This is the first one, make American, that means all Americans. No matter you are Vietnamese, no matter you are Chinese, no matter you Japanese, no matter you Colombian or Mexican or Germany or Irish. You are all American, American. You have been naturalized to be American. So you have to serve the American, American country. And I have been witness, all of you come up here. You clap your hands for Vietnamese to condemn your old Vietnamese. Shame on you. Most of the people here, American view, they look down on the Vietnamese, Vietnamese. You are the one who turned down our Vietnamese-American heritage. What is our American heritage? We trust, we hold truthfulness, we hold... We trust, we hold truthfulness, we hold honesty, and we hold solidarity. But you always come up here to spread fake news, fake issue, to divide among Vietnamese. And especially, the root of all the problem is from Madame Ho. She is the one who create all problems throughout cities. I tell the truth. And I, I am the one who come up here to keep telling the truth of that. Because when they have the Quan Truy Monument One already established, five of the members established and agree that it will be going for the people. For the people. So then Kim Lee Ho, she cut down and she colluded with other tool to cut down things. And that is create big, big problem for our city of Westminster and dividing our people. So today, I want to show you the problem that Kim Lee Ho set up when she start doing things. And she will retire if she was not elected either. Let's hear.
If I'm not elected mayor of the city of Westminster, Mr. Quang Yocian, President of Number Eight, Twenty Twenty Two, I will remove my company's three council.
Yes, you should remove yourself from City of Quan Truy. Rather than you tell the lawyer, the attorney, remove your husband himself. I tell you, you should abide by your wish. Remove yourself from the city of Westminster. Please, so that you can stop creating problems, you stop exploiting this city. And you should do this according to your, your wish. Listen. Yes, that's right. You should remove yourself from the city of Westminster to bring peace to our city, okay? It's same thing with your father who had escaped Vietnam, deserted the people, army before the war ended. He is a high ranking officer, he had deserted the army. That is, I have the truth, the proof of that. So thank you for addressing that.
The next speaker, Nguy Nguy Nguyen, followed by Tony Nguyen.
I don't know, but I want to make sure that Mr. Nam Quang will understand. Because last time, I saw that when, when he had to vote and he did not understand whether to vote or to vote yes or no. I heard a story about trash media. I want to remind you. This is a trash media, they interview people from the government. And in it, there is Mr. Phó, Phó, Phó Thị trưởng. These people are not from the government. And I know that every month, there are six, six workshops. There is a meeting, a workshop, six times. And once is six hundred dollars, which is three times six a month.
A lady said earlier, Mr. Nam, that this trash media, I think that's true because your channel, you often interview people from the sanitation department. And that was the former Vice Mayor. He would have a meeting for sanitation department six times a month. Oh, six times a month, six hundred dollars per meeting, that would be, that would be six hundred dollars a month.
Because we are in the country, it's possible that City of Westminster is bankrupt. And now, Du Kim, the president of China, is also in government.
And that's okay. But perhaps why the City of Westminster might, you know, hurt the bank of China. Now we know Al, Mayor, he's also with the sanitary, sanitation department.
So that's a great idea, we are interviewing people from government. And interviewing people, they are all very rich, very wealthy. They don't say anything, they are very rich. For example, Mr. Phó Thị trưởng, Du Kim, sitting with his colleagues, with people, very rich. When the person said, now, don't call him a dog. No, not call him a dog, call him a dog. This is one of Mr. Phó Thị trưởng's principles, to protect people, to protect people. He will be called as a dog.
Trash media is appropriately named, right? It has, it will feature or interview people from the sanitation department like Al, Bert, Mayor. And then, he also has a partner, his partner on this camera calling people, if I cannot call you a fucking bitch, should I call you a fucking whore?
And Mr. Phó Thị trưởng is not a rich man, he is a poor man. So I, this time, I was at a party, a party. I saw her, her girl, she was singing, singing. I wanted to tell her, because Mr. Phó Thị trưởng does not let her girl go in the car to go in the car at the party with her friend. Then, someone called her, she called her, she took her girl. During the year, I did a party, I was very happy.
I was flying there, this partner, at the Tep Parade. His niece, who happened to be African American, wanted to go on the unoperated float. But she wouldn't let her, she was crying. So I was able to do a good act for the New Year. I, I don't know, I got her on the road.
And one thing, during the year, I wanted to celebrate her. And I asked her, is there any word of Chinese, during the year? She said, one staff member took my clothes, called me, I'm this, I'm that, I'm that. This is what Mr. Phó Thị trưởng did, arrest and assault people like this.
And another thing, during the, during the Tep, the New Year, Lunar New Year, I ran into him and all I would do was wish him the best. And then he said, or had...
A story, the staff member.
He asked the staff to...
Arrest?
Arrest me.
Arrest?
And arrest me, having, having that person putting a phone close to my face. I'm asking whatever that is appropriate for someone as a vice mayor.
And I heard that they are going to cancel the future government. I think, I remember, it was in nineteen seventy-five, after the flood. Communist Party, the Communist Party, fought for our country. Which is, when the people came to the future government. Now, the people came, the board, the people want to cancel this. The Communist Party, very loyal to the people. Have fought for our country, to give us the life of today. And we have been fighting each other, fighting over, to let those people not be silenced. That's a very big crime. The sea of blame, it doesn't cover the sins of Mr. Phó Thị trưởng. So, parents, people, they are ashamed. And this sea of blame, it doesn't cover the sins of the people who canceled the future government.
I heard that they faced on the agenda, on the agenda, I think this bank canceled primary funding. I think this is similar to what happened in banking, somebody tried out the Humbers, take it over. Retaliation, they, retaliation. Now that you have preview on the city council, you probably retaliate against councilmember Kim Lee Ho for sponsoring that project. And so, I feel sorry for the veterans who have sacrificed their life for that, to track us, for that, for free of your sin here. Protect one, the Hongnan River, to wash away your sin, you vice mayor.
And only Communist Party, only people who are loyal to Communist Party, people who are poor, people who are not rich, they are doing such things.
Only the North Humbers and people who were not raised properly by, by family, would do something like that.
And Mr. Nam Quang also said, he is infected. He used the word "rich" to say "rich". Which is, he was infected, he didn't understand. People who are Communist Party, he said, he was infected, he didn't understand. He used the word "rich", in trash media.
And Mr. Nam Quang, along with Charlie Chi Nguyen, used a term, the Vietnamese called NHK, and you will see "rich" of the word. That's a term of the Humbers view. I don't know why he had a term in the stand for that, because he associated with them. And so now that term got to his head.
I feel very sorry, I have a feeling, that this is a common one. Westminster was conquered by Communist Party. Because of the words, that were taken from a Mr. Phó Thị trưởng. And the actions, are extreme, because of Communist Party. The Communist Party, now...
I am saddened because it looks like our city is being taken over by the communists because we have a vice mayor who, at point, can't act like a communist.
The next speaker is Tony Nguyen, followed by Tony Nguyen.
Hello, Chairman Charlie Nguyen. Chairman Nam Quang Nguyen. Deputy Director Kim Lee Ho. Deputy Director Carlos Manzo. Deputy Deputy Director Emi West. And the city of Westminster.
Good evening, Mayor Charlie Chi Nguyen, Vice Mayor Nam Quang Nguyen, Councilmember Kim Lee Ho, Councilmember Paulus Andrew, and Councilmember Andrew Fang West, as well as the entire city set.
I am glad to meet all of you, in this conference today.
Happy Lunar New Year, to everyone, happy New Year.
My name is Sun Mai, I have a few words. I want to say to the chairman and the deputy director, in the country of Vietnam, our brothers and sisters, to fight for our country, to protect our country.
I have a few things that I would like to share with our mayor and our council members. And now, as Vietnamese, we have our father, our brother, who fought for freedom during the Vietnam War.
During the war, our brothers and sisters suffered many casualties. And I want to say, to the chairman and the deputy director, please think of the future government. Please, or the future government. In one place, and the soldiers, the soldiers, in a thousand years. To let our brothers and sisters always remember the pride of those people in the Vietnam War.
So during the war, blood was shed, why we sacrificed for protect freedom? And because of that, I'm asking the mayor and our council members to allow the hundred million to be placed at a place that is stolen, that is holy, worthy of a sacrifice made by the, by the army.
You see, these kids, they're leaving. Because at that time, they have to sit, listen to people, but they're leaving like this.
I want to say to the chairman and the deputy directors here, we have brothers and sisters, our brothers, our sisters, we are in the war. Why don't we think of our brothers and sisters, our country? And we have to think today, through the land, through the water. We should think of, we should think of the South of China, the South of China. China, China, China. China, China.
So, to the mayor and council members, we all have our loved ones, brother, brother, relative, who served and fought during the Vietnam War. Why don't we think about them, about the sacrifice that they made, the blood that they gave, so that we can have our freedom, that we have a chance to be in this great country, a small American.
We should think of, think of the people, Vietnam War. And we are thankful, we hope, we are thankful, we are thankful. Think of the future government, for us, and our brothers and sisters. We should remember our pride, our culture.
That's the thing, the thing of the sacrifice made by the member of the military, of the public Vietnam, military, of the public Vietnam. Think of the sacrifice made by the man, and because of that, they allowed the movement to be placed at a place that is stolen, that is holy.
So, I want to say, I have heard a lot of words, powerful words. And I can't speak, we live in this country. Those Chinese, they will look at us, very long. Dear brothers and sisters, please unite yourselves, please forgive those who are wrong. And I want to say to the chairman, to the deputy directors, Và xin thị trưởng, các nghị viên, hội thị trưởng hãy ngồi lại, hãy lắng nghe những tiếng nói của những người dân, tất cả người dân. Cho dù thành phố Westminster hay thành phố Gareno, Sao Tà An nay, chúng ta hãy đoàn kết và để cho những người hoa kỳ họ nhìn thấy sự tốt đẹp của chúng ta xây dựng một đất nước hoa kỳ. Xuân Mai xin một lời. Và cũng các ông hãy ủng hộ Westminster trong từng lần có sự tốt đẹp. Tất cả mọi người hãy ngồi xuống, hàng gắn với nhau. Trong này, cho Xuân Mai xin nói một đôi lời. Và cái ngày hôm tất cả các an thị trưởng, nghị viên, cái ngày ra mắt Tân thị trưởng, Tân nghị viên, Xuân Mai cũng có tham dự đến sớm để chúc mừng cho các an trở thành Tân nghị viên, Tân thị trưởng. Xuân Mai đã đến các sân sáu giờ đã ra mắt nhưng rồi được ngồi ở trong phòng được nổi tiếng không bao lâu. Lúc đó không có nỗi đau, trời thì lạnh, không có vớ, không khăn quần. Đang đứng ở ngoài sân hai tiếng bay đồng hồ trời lạnh muốt để xin đến chúc mừng tất cả Tân nghị viên và thị trưởng nhưng không ngờ được mời ra khỏi phòng. Xuân Mai rất buồn đứng trời lạnh căng căng. Anh Hoàng Tấn Kỳ trong ủy ban xây dựng tưởng đại có nói, Xuân Mai em phải cố gắng ở đã để nói một tiếng nói là cho ủy ban xây dựng tưởng đại trong cái lịch trình trong khi tới cái ASEAN đã tới. Nhưng mà Xuân Mai cứ đợi mãi đợi mãi, cả hai tiếng bay đồng hồ mới được cô hòm hòm để hồi về đến nhà đâm quay không thức nổi, hai tuần lạy đau nặng, không biết như thế nào. Nhưng cứ cầu xin ông trên, cầu xin mọi người, cầu xin tất cả các nghị viên, thị trưởng ở đây. Xin cho ủy ban xây dựng tưởng đại, cho cái tưởng đại, cho các an linh chiến sĩ được đặt ở một nơi mà mọi người hàng mong ước trong đó có thị trưởng. Và các nghị viên xin kính chào và kính chúc tất cả mọi người được khỏe mạnh, được huynh á. I'm sorry, it turns up. Thank you very much.
My congratulations to Mayor John Lee Nguyen, Vice Mayor Nam Quang Nguyen and Councilmember Henry Thanh Nguyen. You have earned the trust of the voters of District One and District Four as well as the city of Westminster. The event that I presented tonight was placed in 2020. I should not bring that event back but because of the trust the residents have placed on Vice Mayor Nam Quang Nguyen, I am bringing that back.
Tôi tên là Quang Trọng, tôi là một trong những người đã học viện và media. Tôi tên là Trần Bùi Thăng Thắng, hai hiện tại thành phố, thành của Hoa Kỳ. Tôi là được giúp rất nhiều nghị viên, thị trưởng ở đây, ngay cả ông nghị viên về mặt trí thông tin của tôi được giúp cho tôi và quý vị có những cái lời nói rất hứng thú với quý vị.
My name is Long Ba, I'm a reporter and also working in the media for twenty plus years. I have fifteen years, I have on several occasions been on the journey to help some outstanding members as well as our mayor to send a message to the people in the community.
Bây giờ, tôi là một người giúp thêm cho Quang Trường, ông Nam Quang Nguyễn. Tôi là một thị trưởng làm YouTube, ông đã có sự việc của tôi nói, nói tôi bị cá nhân tôi. Nếu tôi có thể nói ra đó là tôi là người giúp tôi, ông giúp tôi motherfucker.
So, if you want back the time when Vice Mayor Nam Quang Nguyen, yes, my mayor and he was a YouTuber, I don't know if I should mention that but he called me a motherfucker.
Cái đoàn chung, ruộng ma mị.
And he said, fuck you, fuck.
Not fucking, fuck your mother.
No, I don't know if anybody has watched Anger's today, friends about the war. But today, God present a lot of people, we got here. So I want to ask you to apologize on who apologized for it. And normally, I will be forget and I will just go on with the job. So the only thing I want to use a language to message you. You had the permission, you know, to start the channels, you know, the YouTube around your world because of all my relatives in the United States, friends and everyone they copy and very, very, you know, best attitude. As you know, the verdict, you know, in the hunger, you know, the people angry that you do anything including what you did in your past. So I hope we cooperate with you and I hope we cooperate with the man. I hope we cooperate with the founder and I know with the councilmen. So I interview a lot, you know, council member of all too. So I want you, I will forget, you know, but I think you should apologize for everybody in my routine. And you know, my mom is eighty, now she's sixty, oh, she died. So please, you know, say a word for that to me and keep going the job. And I appreciate you put together, thank you so much.
Người cái hit phát biểu là Nhật Vân, ông Nhật Vân.
Trước tiên tôi xin trân trọng chào thị trưởng Nguyễn Bạch Chí. Có thị trưởng Nam Quang Nguyễn, thành phố Westminster, thành phố Gareno, thành phố Westminster. Xin gửi lời thưa sức khỏe và lời hỏi tốt đẹp đến Nam Quang trong cuộc họp thành phố. Đây là một cuộc thi, tôi lên cuộc họp của thành phố.
This is my first time for attending the meeting of the citizens.
Mặc dù nhiều năm nay tôi theo dõi Hội đồng Thành phố ở trên PTV là chị. Thưa quý vị, tôi nghĩ tôi đến đây bởi vì tôi thấy kể từ ngày mà ba người dân tử mới đắc cử thì trong những cuộc họp của Hội đồng Thành phố có rất nhiều người đến tấn công các vị tâm viên cử. Và tôi để ý tôi được biết hầu hết những người đó không phải là hầu hết phần lớn, không phải là tư nhân của Westminster. Và những người này, tôi có thể nói rằng họ là những người đã từng ủng hộ vận động các cuộc danh cử của nghị viên Kim Minh Hộ. Thưa quý vị, tôi nghĩ rằng trong lúc danh cử chúng ta có thể nói đối với của người nhiều nhiều. Nhưng mà khi phần lớn cử tri người ta đã chọn ai đó và đã có kết quả hậu cử thì chúng ta nên bắt tay nhau để thực hiện những điều tốt đẹp để thành thành thành. Và mỗi người ứng cử viên phải có trách nhiệm nói với những người ủng hộ viên mình phải cư xử có văn hóa và đừng có làm do thành phố quá bất kỳ điều tốn kém tiền bạc vì những cái quyền vô bổ và những đuổi hỏi không có ích lợi cho thành phố. Tôi đơn tử có một nghị viên của thành phố Gareno là luôn luôn thường xuyên có mặt trong cuộc họp Hội đồng Westminster và đánh phá hết người nghị viên này đến nghị viên khác. Mặc dù ông ta nói rằng là thành phố Westminster là luôn không sáng động. Hội đồng Thành phố không có đoàn kết như những thành phố khác. Tôi nghĩ là người dân Westminster đã chọn lựa nhân tử của mình và họ chịu trách nhiệm, họ thiệt thòi hay là họ được và họ có quyền phản ứng lại với những người mà họ đã bị nhiễm. Còn những người ở thành phố khác, xin hãy để cho Hội đồng Thành phố này làm việc. Một cái điều cụ thể mà tôi muốn nói là lúc nãy có một người không phải ở thành phố Westminster cái an mặc áo hét đỏ đó, màu hoa đỏ, an lên tố cáo phó thị trưởng Nam Quang là hờ rát an. Nhưng mà tôi là người chứng kiến, là muốn đó an ta gặp. An Tiến Dũng là một YouTuber ở ngoài kia tè. Và an ta chủ động tấn công an Nguyễn Tiến Dũng bằng lời nói. Và an ta đưa hai cái bàn tay an lên, an yêu ngón, hai ngón tay giữa lên, rất là nóng. Mình an ta vong những lời tụng tiểu và thung nghịch thô thỉm. Rồi sau đó mà mình an ta luôn hỏi là an Nam Quang đâu, phó thị trưởng Nam Quang đâu? An ta hỏi hàng trăm lượng như vậy. Và sau đó an Tiến Dũng YouTuber mới đi tìm an Nam Quang và nói lại cái lời của cái an mặc áo hét đó như vậy. Và khi an Nam Quang đi tìm an Tiến Dũng, tức là hai người đi chung rồi họ đi làm riêng thì sau đó an Nam Quang đi tìm an Tiến Dũng. Thì khi mà gặp an Tiến Dũng thì an Tiến Dũng đang quay phim cái an mặc áo hét đỏ đó. Thì cái an mặc áo hét đỏ đó, ảnh nhìn thấy Nam Quang, ảnh tới, ảnh chửi Nam Quang rất là tụng tiểu. An sát tên hỏi mày có phải là phó thị trưởng không Nam Quang, Nam Quang hỏi hàng trăm lượng như vậy. Tôi thề, tôi lấy anh Dũng của tôi, tôi thề, an Nam Quang không nói một lời nào xấu xí. An Nam Quang chỉ quay phim và an cười thôi, thề.
Nanquan was just filming or recording, and all he did was smile.
And he laughed.
And the man in the red suit said, "Are you, are you cute?"
Cute, right?
And that was all.
The next speaker is the president.
Your name is Ms. Smith, since January 2010. There, that's there, council member, standing there, officers. Uh, council member Hillary Hope, and council member couple sketches. They do first amendment for first amendment rights, we do have the right to speak. And I do believe that we should be allowed to have five minutes, rather than, you can say what they can say in the agreement, so thank you very much, first amendment, I appreciate it. I wanted to talk about some positive things to start with. First of all, congratulations to our police department for sending officers, that I've been able to have a little interaction with this week, good job. Looks like we have some good people, appreciate that. Looks like the tech parade was a success, and I hope that brought money to some businesses that were, you know, that are in the area that was held. Um, I do hope that the city can recover the money that was spent to get that done. I think we're on a budget, when I'm on a budget, I don't go to Starbucks, see that coffee, I get coffee at home. Hundred fifty thousand dollars is not a lot in our overall budget, but it's money that we probably can't, can't really afford to lose. So I'm hoping that somebody will be here. Congratulations to our police department, and Dover Liberty Park is getting cleaned up. We have less homeless, less rotavirus, which is great. Now, on the negative side, it really saddens me that so many people have come up to speak against the council, and especially the propagating business. It just, it just breaks my heart. It shouldn't be that way. I mean, shouldn't we be of a reproach in our, you know, in our positions? I'm expected to be that way, in the position that I told, in working as an insurance agent representing the city of California. I have six point one. In my opinion, and I apologize because I was late tonight, because I worked until eight o'clock tonight. Um, in my opinion, council members should not be dealt with being in different positions. So for him, he should be active in another, you know, in another thing within the city or the county. My, my opinion. Seven point one, dissolving the monument, we have spent so much money and time on this. I get it, I totally get it, that there are people that would like to have that. And that's great, but you for it, and I'm a private man, we couldn't without. As a Jew, six million people, six million Jews died in World War II. I'd love to say I'm loving that for that, not just for the Jews that died in the Holocaust, but the homosexuals, the disabled, the Gypsies. But I wouldn't expect the city to pay for it. My biggest concern is I try to spend my dollars in Westminster, my shop. The number of businesses that are leaving our city. We are not, we are not a business friendly city. So I just was over on Westminster and Old West, so Sally's has left, Big Lots has left. I believe that Michael's is probably leaving. I don't have the answers, I, I'm quite honest, I don't have the answers. But we have got to do something to make up for the three or four million dollar shortage that we have just in the first quarter of this year. So what are we going to do about that? You guys are smarter than I am, so what are we going to do? Thank you.
So now we can move on to our Zoom audience. The first speaker is Roger Middler. Please unmute yourself. Everybody begin.
Mary?
Yes, please.
Hello, Mary.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, first, congratulations to the city manager, Ms. Corleone, and the entire staff members, police officers, and the whole community for what appeared to be a nice, successful parade and event celebrating your leader. Nice job by the employees also, I did watch my YouTube. So that was a nice, that was a nice show. Uh, now if you could give the city finance to order that parade. Many people are anxiously awaiting some news of revenue sources. So let's, uh, let's get the financing apps cleared up. Uh, I do want to say, nothing I say tonight is an accusation for a personal attack. Just my eyewitness testimony, my views, what I have seen in person so far, which is my direct experience, not unfounded accusations. I will say how under it is to be the color first amendment, freedom of speech by forty percent. It is total, of course, you already know it. It shows that the old country is still with you. Your hypocrisy is so thick for you little tyrants. This is our meeting, not your meeting. This time is for community, communication, not during the day, at an appointment at your office. Correct me if I'm wrong, Amy West, delete all comments on the Facebook posts on our local wall division tonight. While you were sitting there in council chambers, the resident was reading comments tonight, and poof, they disappeared like fire. Insurance like you did. Charlie, you stated rules which violate the first amendment. You are proving to be a tyrant. And even when the evidence is right in front of you, denounce it. You can't make people present evidence for this whole BS. Do you know that, or are you that stupid? You are the proof of everything you ask for. Next, on this agenda is five point one. Recent resolution fifty-one oh three. Wow, what a joke. You aren't even smart enough to know that you can't erase history. That meeting happened. That three hour presentation happened, publicizing the crap of your propaganda minister Nanquan. The record of that, of all this fake propaganda, lies by Nanquan and his cohorts, is still exists on the city archives, on video and audio. So whatever you do tonight on the subject won't make it go away. And in fact, all the statement, all the false statements, lies and propaganda did actually happen. There was evidence provided. Those words came out of Nanquan's mouth, and maybe equally came out of Charlie's mouth, which she got officially reprimanded for it also. That propaganda obviously worked, but maybe we're still not legal planning the last meeting. Our manager was homeless, he was homeless. Such total obvious BS. This is a joke, a very sad, unfunny joke. You three are proving to be more of an embarrassment to the city. In fact, Nanquan is still currently suing more lies. I watched one on his YouTube, lies disparaging character of this fellow council member, a direct violation of the city's code of conduct and code of ethics. Even the watered down person that was such contentious subject in twenty nineteen. And are you going to reprimand Nanquan for his egregious conduct? Are you? You have yet to show me a bunch of any character or ethics in the past forty years. So I'll bet you nothing, as usual. Like not accusing yourself in regards to the pending lawsuit of the Country Victory Foundation. So one hundred percent obvious conflict of interest is free speech, only one is convenient and agreeable to you. The reasons for Amy and Nanquan about three go across the ball, BS. There's no one trying to stop him, just to call out his dishonesty. Don't pretend you don't know he's doing, he's doing it. But then again, you don't know better than his slimy character, and his ethics aren't on the level of the sewer. A lot of your slanderous conduct is well liked with you, Charlie. So whatever you do on this recent and fake news, it's only to make yourselves feel better about yourselves. When in fact, to the public paying attention to all this just makes you look worse. Makes you look worse than you already do, this bunch of crap. If you, if you know wrong, then people will be here with grievances against you. All these people up here talking negative against you, you earned it. And then we have items, one one, Nanquan wants to disball the country, monuments update committee, and the whole mining project. Wait, isn't council member's has a meaningful monument now subject, subject to you or recall? He led the way, and we should recall Mr. Monzo, and his, oh, because of that, oh, the hypocrisy ringing in her ears. But yes, disband, terminate, and never attempt this monument again. So far.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amy Wong. Please unmute yourself. I mean.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're fine.
Okay, sorry, I had oral surgery yesterday, so I'm a little sore. So I'd like to, I'd like to first off, say thank you to both Kimberly and Carlos standing there for this conference. I, I'm, I'm in shock with what I've seen this, tonight so far. And the fact that, I, I literally have no words. That's how, says a lot, because normally I have many. In regards to, like, all this muttling that has been happening this evening, you know, I, I really thought that it couldn't get worse, but apparently it did. Um, you know, at the last meeting, I know Amy had made a point of saying this, as well as Charlie, uh, that, you know, the reason why we wanted to lower the time for public comments is because they take up so much time in the meeting. But I also want to remind you, um, that when you are going back and forth with your fellow council members, and kind of try to brand stand against each other, that is taking up even more time than public comments, just making sure that you're aware and you notice, gosh, I guess it's a print in my hypocrisy. Um, I'm, I'm sure, because I know I've had a couple messages already, uh, that Amy apparently finds it extremely funny when I call in and make comments, because she's constantly smirking, and people go to the bathroom and whatnot. You know, if you guys want us to respect you as council members, with both ways, if you're not going to respect the people that are coming to speaking, uh, you know, you can't ask us for any modicum of respect whatsoever, when you're getting up fifty times in a meeting, going to a restaurant, uh, talking to each other, sharing your phones. I mean, if you want the respect, then you need to earn it. And right now, you guys aren't earning any respect from anyone. And that, I mean, clearly, like, you know, I, I, I understand that, I still can't, I can't see the time, or still I don't know which time I have left. Um, which I would like to make sure that in the future, we have that available for the people that are speaking on Zoom. Also, I just, I can't, I was actually privy to go to, uh, other cities' council meetings the other night, and something happened there that would never have flown in with sensor. And I wanted to thank you, Mr. Benhausen, because at least on that comment, we know, like, me and the other person that actually made a comment, that would never have flown in with Mr. Question, you're not ashamed for that. So thank you. I know you don't put anything from us, but thank you. I, you just get your shit, you know, I really did come on first tonight, but I guess I'm not as bad as some. Um, you really get your shit together, council members. Uh, it's, it looks like a cluster of ass up there. I mean, uh, if, you know, people, we joke, but people call me to the council meetings, I don't care, and that's exactly what's going on here. And I really, I really wish that the inside even stopped. And Amy, please start calling council member Monzo, council member Monzo. Not Carlos, not Monzo, not guy that sits next to me, not dude with a suit, none of that. It's council member Monzo, councilwoman O, get it right. Or just sit down, let someone else do it, because obviously, you don't get your shit. That's all.
The next speaker is Emily Grant. Please unmute yourself, and you may begin. Oh. If you need to, not, you want to speak, if you do, please unmute. Um, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and city council, my name is Emily Grant, senior public affairs manager for SoCal Gas. We're reaching out tonight to inform all customers that natural gas prices are going to be even higher than usual this January, due to several unprecedented factors beyond our control. Customers may see a winter natural gas bill double or higher compared to one year ago. The high bills are a result of historically high natural gas prices in the western United States. As you know, SoCal Gas doesn't set the price for natural gas. Instead, natural gas prices are determined by national and regional markets. SoCal Gas buys natural gas in those markets on behalf of residential and small business customers, and the cost of buying that gas is still to those customers is no market. The SoCal Gas does not profit from gas commodity prices growing up. According to the O's Energy Information Administration for the EIA, a number of factors contribute to higher natural gas commodity prices. White spread of low local temperatures on the west coast, including Washington and Oregon. High natural gas demand for key via customer areas with below level temperatures. Reduced natural gas supplies to the west coast from Canada and the Rocky Mountains. Reduced interstate pipeline capacity to the west coast because of pipeline maintenance activities in west Texas. And low natural gas store shuttles on the west coast. We really want to help our customers reduce energy bills, and we encourage them to lower their thermostat three to five degrees, out permitting, install proper coffee and weathering dripping, and this could save roughly ten to fifteen percent on heating and cooling bills. Wash your clothes in cold water, reduce the temperature on the water heater. In fact, lowering the temperature on the water heater or setting it at a hundred twenty degrees could save up to twenty-two percent in energy costs. Limit the use of non-natural natural gas appliances such as spas, pool heaters when further needed. And you can visit socalgas.com/hemantshirebills for more information. We also offer several ways to help income qualified customers through our bill assistance and forgiveness programs, online forgiveness assistance, and local pay program. In addition, SoCal Gas recently announced a one million dollar contribution to the Gas Assistance Fund, a program that helps income qualified customers pay their natural gas bills. And to learn more about that, and to learn more about that, please visit socalgas.com/distance. If you or a member of the community have any questions, please ask me directly. I also provide a free CD card with a one, one pager, or one sheet of information that can be posted on any of your social media feeds, or for the cities used to pass out receipts. Thank you.
The next speaker is Camila Holmey. You may unmute yourself. And you may begin.
Can you hear me, Dizzy?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. City of Mayor, council members, let me begin by saying congratulations Christine, and also Chief Lavi, and everyone else who helped me. This year's country is looking possible. You truly deserve all the praise and accolades possible. I was quite skeptical, and I am still wondering who will make up the money. But I am beyond proud of all of you. I did not intend to instigate you tonight, and before any member of this council discounts my lack of presence in chambers, know this, I would be there in person if I could. However, my child just got out of the ER, and they will always be present. But do not mistake that for me not paying attention. Trust me, I am. Council member Hope and Monzo, thank you for standing up for relevance. Council member Hope and Monzo, thank you for standing up for reverence. Thank you for honoring the First Amendment. Thank you for following the law. And Christine, thank you for enforcing it. Charlie, you should be ashamed. You are a sham of a mayor and do not understand the basic functions of your title. Nam Quan, I'm convinced you have no idea what is going on as people are passing you notes in the bathroom trying to leave your seat. Amy, you have all the damn audacity. You are rude, disrespectful, and have zero concept of decorum. Hell, you can't even unlock residence even when you've been called out to allow civil discourse. The three of you have no business in leadership roles. As for rescinding, rescinding and putting orders that maybe Amy and Nam Quan understand, that means undoing the resolution of fake news. You two are the exact reason that resolution exists. You wouldn't know truth if it was staring you in the face. Christine and Christian, I know you're doing your best. However, it might look like people have to put the materials at all future meetings to help keep this city from further lawsuits. It's quite apparent that Charlie, Amy, and Nam Quan have zero comprehension of the ground act or Robert's Rules of Order. The very basic rules used to copy functional, coherent, cohesive meetings. Frankly, there is no amount of training you can offer these three that will help them understand. You can explain it to them, but you cannot understand it for them. The bar for this council was already a tripping hazard in its house, and maybe Amy, Nam Quan, and Charlie decided to use that bar to play Lego with the devil. There seems to be no love for you three. In closing, outside of council member Monzo and council member Hope, this council is embarrassing, disgraceful, and should never be referred to as a government body. You three are a scoundrel clown show, and you should apologize to every single resident.
Uh, there was no one else, uh, who had, had, um, known that we were in this chamber.
Thank you very much.
Can I just say something quickly here, just real quick? Um, you know, if I could request that while the public is speaking, please do not, you know, a lot of chatter over there, talking, not only is that disrespectful, but it really, you know, interferes with our concentration and our hearing. So, you know, it happened a few times, so I'd like to, you know, you have to ask for a quiet so that we can all pay attention to what this, what this is saying. Thank you.
Okay, wait, 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 we have to introduce first, and then I will resume the conversation. First of all, I would like to thank you, all members of, come out and then speak tonight. Talking about First Amendment, we ought to respect you and we ought to make sure that we, we hear you. The thing is that, you know, I can't speak for all the council members here, but I can speak for myself. I reject it, and I don't agree with all the accusations about me tonight. Look around the room, and, you know, unfortunately, at this point here, all the people who are accusing me for the things that I didn't do for the wrong reason, they're not here right now to listen to what I trash and... And that is not right. I, as a, as a mayor, my role is to control the building. And when there is, you know, just like the last meeting, council member Nelson asked me if I understand the emotion. There is a personal attack, then I need to jump in. That's exactly what I do. Is you can, if you notice that even Tony Wood, when he's talking, he started talking about, um, council member Hope, that father, has got to stop me because there is no personal attack here. We need to address this, that is the subject I'm addressing. So I am staying with my, I will stay with my integrity, and I'm not going to take any accusation, you know, about me. And that's what I just want to let you know. You know, you are, you have the right, and I respect you for what you say. But when we don't, when we respect you, we don't say anything during that, there will be comments that doesn't mean that we check it through, that's, that's a truth story. So basically, that's what I want to say. I want to thank you for coming out and speaking your mind, but please understand that, you know, I'm not going to tolerate, I'm not going to take, you know, for accusations at this truth when, when there's no evidence to show it to me. Uh, council member Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to say thank you for all who came out and speak and share your opinion. And it's very important because of that First Amendment, and I appreciate you to do that. Now, I just want to address my Vietnamese community. Um, I was saddened, you know, to see my Vietnamese community fighting each other when we are, you know what I'm wearing today? You know what I'm wearing, right? It's called Amiai, to represent our Vietnamese culture. And I was embarrassed to see our Vietnamese older folks fighting against each other. I want you to share your opinion. I want to share your concern. But when we start fighting each other, that is the younger generation looking. And they're embarrassed, and they don't want to be around that. And as I'm speaking for the younger generation, I want to encourage you guys, as Vietnamese community, we have a lot of great characteristics. We are family oriented. Why don't we show that to the community? Why don't we show that to other community who are looking at us in the city of Westminster? Show them that how we are strong. We are fighters. We escaped from the communist regime with them. I am, as many of you guys, escaped on the fishing boat. And my dad was imprisoned by the communist regime. And we understand what hardship is. We understand what silencing of our voice means and what death means. With that in mind, most of us came out of that. And I encourage the older generation to teach us younger generation to live with respect and honor, to agree to disagree, and to live in unity. Because when we are united together, the communists are afraid. But when we are divided, that's how we win. So I encourage you guys today, moving forward, that we have a lot of good characteristics, that we can shine to our community and those around us that's looking at us. We are family oriented. We work hard. We provide for a family with the opportunity that we have in America here to live the American dreams. And I want to encourage you guys to show that to the younger generation like me. And I just want to remind you guys to do that for us, the younger generation. I was really heartbroken. I was trying to hold my tears. I couldn't hold it because I was so sad for our Vietnamese community. So I just want to encourage you guys moving forward in the future, you know, council meeting, that you guys show the good characteristic that you have in our community. This is the city of Westminster. We're known for love like God. We're known for those refugees that has saved the communist regime for freedom. Let's show that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is out of order.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It is time for the council, you know, to do the business. So I'm sorry. I'm sorry again. So is there any, any other comments before we start, you know, doing the city business?
From council? Well, this, I thought we were...
Yes, I, I will be first.
This is not the order. You're supposed to...
If you want to talk, then, then just, just tell me. So I follow then.
Oh, sure. Okay. Thank you. Well, I, I just have, you know, one thing to say to Amy is that, you know, stop being preachy. You know, you're talking, when you're talking, if you're Vietnamese, then you should know that you should not be preachy or trying to teach your elderly folks when you should be learning. I don't, I believe that's really in every culture. So, you know, I don't have a problem with people coming up here, whether they're old or young, to speak. Tell us all.
Okay. Mayor, if I may, just, I want to make sure we follow proper process. As I mentioned previously to the council, when we have public comment, the ground act does allow a brief response. What we can't have is a discussion, so we've got to avoid that. But you are allowed a brief comment in response. So I think we're fine at this point. I just want to make sure everyone understands. I'm, I'm monitoring this. A brief response is appropriate, but not a discussion.
And I, I think that's exactly what everybody... Okay, thank you. All right, any, any other brief comments? If not, then we move on to the city business. The consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by a whole call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council, all staff, request that specific items be moved from the consent calendar for separate action in discussion.